Same thing my dad was a cop years and using it as a long sentence.
You will want that.
Yeah.
No, they get.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Hodges, would you please listen to the budget allegiance?
Sir. The budget allegiance to the flag of the United States. And to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, Commissioners, first up, discussion approval of minutes from our last meeting, we were all here.
Move ahead, present.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries on to discussion of last meeting's calendar.
I have nothing.
Nor do I.
Nor do I. We will move on then to previously signed documents, discussions, approval.
Can you approve it?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. Thank you. Next up, Mr. Bossy is here. John, how are you?
Good.
What do you? The BAV box replacement, we only discussed this recently.
Oh, yeah.
So what'd you come up with? You found somebody like them this week?
Did an RFP after the last meeting, advertised it for three weeks, put on the state website for three weeks. He wanted to add some, he had a fairly decent response to it. We had three vendors provide pricing, KPMV Enterprises is the lowest, thirty-four thousand, one hundred ninety-eight dollars. And I've also asked as part of this if we can include a project contingency of seven thousand, five hundred dollars. Just because I know as we go along through these thirty-three little systems that we're going to find, things that need to be addressed in real time, we just weren't able to handle repairs as they come up to keep the moving along. As part of this too, I ran an RFP to replace the building automation control system. We had two vendors provide bids, one Grand State Automation for a hundred fifty thousand from Alliance Mechanical, at two hundred and forty thousand.
What else I have? I don't see that.
It's out of order.
Oh, hold on one second.
After the finance, financial report.
Right, okay. I don't think I have that.
We are the automated control.
Yes.
Nursing home.
I have Wicked Pool Mechanical on KPMV. Oh, okay. At the box. Very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, everyone has the page?
Yep.
Okay, John, please continue.
So, the projects, these two projects, they need to happen concurrently, the controls vendor, Grand State Automation would be the vendor giving the mechanical contractor, the actuators and the valves to install, to refurbish and rebuild those the A V boxes. And then once they've been rebuilt and they'd have the control to put on them, and then they'd be balanced for water flow and balanced for air. So they, these projects need to happen concurrently at the same time. And what we're hoping is that we would be able to start this work in April during that time of year when we're not necessarily heating, not necessarily cooling.
So we're looking at, first off, Granite State Automation over Alliance Mechanical?
That's correct.
And there's a nine thousand dollar discrepancy in bids, and it's apples to apples per your review?
Nine thousand dollars?
For the second piece, right? Is that what you're talking about?
Uh, yeah, we will Granite State, oh, okay, I see. Okay, so Granite State's at fifteen thousand, no, a hundred fifty thousand.
A hundred fifty thousand.
So ninety thousand dollars.
Yeah. And Alliance Mechanical is at two hundred and forty thousand?
Yes.
So the differential is ninety thousand.
Yep. Yeah, our apples for apples, and I can say that Grand State Automation was the vendor that did the new system at the courthouse, and they, they performed excellent. And they've also worked with KPMV on other projects at other facilities elsewhere. So it seems like a very good pairing of the two of them together.
Probably so. I'm just pretty surprised to see such a discrepancy.
I can tell you Alliance Mechanical is a Revant-based company, and they're a very, very big company.
Mm-hmm.
You know, Grand State Automation is a smaller company based out of Manchester.
It's the same scope of work.
Identical scope.
Then we know how Alliance got so big then.
Yeah, and then I'm going to get bigger here.
Okay.
And you have, we have a hundred fifty thousand in budget for that.
Right. So you can see at the bottom of the, of the request is three, three requests for your consideration to vote on, one to reward to controls to Granite State Automation, two to award the refurbishment of the V A V boxes to KPMV in the amount of thirty-four thousand, one hundred ninety-eight dollars. And then of course, request number three is to be able to add seven thousand, five hundred dollars for contingency to refurbish that, that project.
What's interesting here is Alliance didn't come in at the top of the totem pole, Wicked Pool did, and that surprises me because Wicked Pool is a local company.
Hmm.
You know, so, but hey, that's okay. So K P, K P M B will take care of that.
Yeah.
And then, can you tell us a little bit more about the requests?
I'm sorry?
The third request.
The, the, the third, the third request.
Okay. Um, so to, so say you authorize awarding the project to KPMV for the thirty-four thousand, one ninety-eight dollars, I'm, I'm asking if we can add an additional seventy-five hundred dollars in the event that we find items that need to be addressed going along through the project. We've got thirty-three of these units to, to address, so, you know, worried about leaking pipes, I'm worried about insulation that may be missing, you know, just any other items that would halt or stop the progress of the job. And I just want to be able to have the ability to keep things moving so we can get it done as quickly as possible to get the nursing home up and running within that time frame.
How did you arrive at that number, seventy-five hundred? Are you speculating or?
Hundred percent speculating.
Okay, so Commissioners, thoughts on?
Yeah, I had one thing, just while you're thinking about it, that the V A V boxes, there's a hundred and eight thousand in budget for that. So there's thirty-four, thirty-five thousand, plus the seventy-five hundred still leave to as well under budget.
Is it possible it'll go so well that we won't even need a contingency? Ultimately, we're optimistic?
If, you know, obviously if we don't find anything, we're not going to use the money.
Yeah. Commissioners, thoughts, suggestions, insight?
Is this the project that's connected to the increase in mallets to follow this project? Or is that, I'm thinking of a different project, everybody said that.
That's the one fifty.
Just the control system.
The one fifty.
Yeah, so it's just the controls, the first part.
Okay, so we added that.
Yeah, why did we have so much for the V A V boxes?
Originally, we had planned on replacing the V A V boxes, the whole thing. And as we were doing these walkthroughs with the vendors, they're like, why are you replacing the boxes? Just replace everything that's on the boxes, because at the end of the day, that's really all they are is just boxes.
Mm-hmm.
So the price, you know, for a hundred and eight thousand dollars was reflective of us having to like alter ceilings, drywall, paint, patch to get blocks is out, cut ductwork, re-insulate. So it was a much, much, much more invasive project. So during the vendor walkthroughs, I issued an addendum which altered the scope of work to just replace all of the parts and pieces on them.
So by doing it that way, it doesn't degrade the work being done, everything will run fine?
Hundred percent. Yeah.
Good.
I just thought it was a much more cost-effective approach, a lot easier and less invasive. Thank you.
And the control valve system project, that's a must project.
Yes.
Well, we're fortunate to be able to get multiple bidders for a better price.
Hmm.
Because as you know, certainly during the COVID years, we were struggling just to get one, you know, one bid submitted. So you have two and three, and that's a plus. What say you Commissioners?
I think I thought, is, is there any reason that we need to put any sort of contingency on this per approval of the budget? Or what happens next week if they, there should be some change?
Yes, you, you, we will, these, neither of these contracts can be awarded until after we find out the budget passed.
Okay.
So, right, this is, your decision will be to award the contract in the event that budget passes on. But yeah, these, these, these will not be, no contracts will be awarded until.
I've already let the vendors know that it'll be sometime between March fifth and April first.
Okay, then, then we notified us that we're committed to go.
Yeah.
I will accept the recommendation as presented.
I'll say.
Of all three projects.
I'll say. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. Thank you Commissioners, John, thank you.
Thank you.
Good work here, very thorough.
Thank you. On with the next one is the, you know, the other for the heat exchanges for the rooftop units. So during preventive maintenance, it was discovered that we had two R T units, rooftop units, number three and number five on the roof of the courthouse, which provide heating and cooling to courtroom number two and the grand jury room. So we have to put new heat exchanges in, they're cracked. So as a result, the two units are physically shut off right now to prevent any risk of having carbon monoxide into the building. So currently those two rooms are only getting residual heat from other areas. So in, in an effort to try to expedite this, I get three prices from three vendors in lieu of doing an RFP for two or three weeks and then catching whatever the next meeting would be. The lead time on the heat exchanges on one is like three weeks, from another one like five weeks. So I was just looking to try to save as much time as possible. So the request is to ask for permission away of the purchasing requirement to move forward with the work.
So interesting that K P M B came in highest in this occasion. Certainly the number on Eckard and Johnson is attractive. Do we know much about them and the kind of work they do?
Eckard and Johnson was actually the ones who found the crack heat exchanges. They were the ones doing the vendor maintenance.
Yep.
And I actually had it verified by another vendor, just to make sure before we spent the money that they weren't back cracked when they are. And they've always, they've always done a good work for the county.
And did any of these three outfits convey to you how long their repairs would last? I mean, you're going to get ten, fifteen, twenty years out of them, or?
So there's, there's a total of seven units like this at the courthouse. And they're twelve years old, and they have a life expectancy of fifteen years. So it is something that I am going to have to address in, in a later budget request.
Yeah.
But this will get us, this will get us by, you know, hopefully for quite a while.
Could last a few seasons, a few winters?
Absolutely. My only concern, the heat exchanges should be fine for years, but like I said, they are twelve-year-old units that do heating and cooling. You know, so I have just thinking in my head that, you know, we could lose an air conditioning compressor at some point in the unit. I'll deal with that when we, if and when we get there.
But for six thousand dollars and change, they should be good for another three years.
Yeah, and I can tell you that it was over forty thousand dollars just to replace those two.
Yeah, it sounds like a good investment.
Is this one lucky?
No, this is going to come out of John's maintenance and repairs budget.
Okay, yeah.
And those monies are available right now?
Yes, I mean, we did.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
It sets a bad, obviously it's an unexpected project that came up, but.
We'll figure it out.
That's right, we're going to work with it and.
We always do. What say you Commissioners? Is there a motion?
Some.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right, the motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, John, thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you.
We share in getting us, competitive getting. Always saves money when we do that with them. Okay, Commissioners, we have the financial update, Lori Sharpe is here.
Yes, good evening.
Good evening. Lori? That's the good word. When the mining woman?
Have an updated fund balance report. Okay, so where, that's been updated. The last time that was reported to you, it was about three point five million at the end of two thousand and twenty-four. That's increased a bit. Well, I know a bit, so there's some good work. Two hundred thousand dollars approximately. We received a fourth quarter F map which I think was a bit unexpected, so that's good news. So our excess revenue, we anticipate is going to be eight hundred and eighty-two thousand, two thirty-eight. And our operational savings, we anticipate is going to be one million, two twenty-eight, seven sixty-eight. And so that's going to add a total of two million, forty-seven roughly to the fund balance for two thousand and twenty-three. And as this says right on there, it's un-audited estimates. Although at this point, for numbers for the end of two thousand and twenty-three, we should be fairly close to that. The other thing you have, we have two thousand and twenty-four revenue and expense reports. And these numbers are based on the tentative numbers that are not issued yet. But these are the numbers being put forth for two thousand and twenty-four purpose. Both project receiving, receiving, can't even read my own writing. Both project the end of the year or the receipts to be exactly what is budgeted. Since it's early on in the season, because we don't have projections, or estimative year-end revenue to be different than what you're projecting, if you're budgeting for. So with thirteen percent through two thousand and twenty-four, all expenses overall, the bottom line of the expenses is twelve percent, they're at that twelve percent. And to date, the expenses predominantly are things like payroll, insurance, or other necessities to run the front seat. The next thing you should have is a cash flow. My cash flow is projecting that we're going to need to borrow by the end of March. The executive committee is scheduled to meet on March fifth, and that's to approve the TAN. And then upon approval, we have plans set in place for a closing of March fourteenth. So we'll be within our time needs to put the money in place by the end of March. We're approved to borrow nine million, two hundred, seventy-five thousand dollars roughly. And I received some information today that rates right now are, are around four point five five percent for borrowing.
And has, has it gone out to bid yet?
Yes. It had.
When is it supposed to close?
It's next week. Next week, and of course, that's all tentative on approvals from the executive committee, of course, we approved that. We got one bid, I don't have details on it, I found out about it very late today, but one came in this afternoon. And there is, in speaking with council, there is optimism of at least two to three more. So hopefully we'll have a little bit of selection to pick from. The next thing you have there is the nursing home receivable balance, a history report. At the end of two thousand and twenty-three, we have a balance of four hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars. Of that, three hundred and ninety-two thousand, five thirty-eight is from two thousand and twenty-three. If you look way down and you see some like two thousand seventeen and eighteen numbers, those are inflections. We're not going to be worried about collecting or writing, or actually writing off those or anything. They are currently being collected on, so that's why they're just kind of hanging out there. And so those are going down slowly every month. And then that actually works into my next thing that I have, which I think you should also have. And it's the request to do a write-off for the nursing home accounts receivable. So each year I come up with a rule and request approval to write off a certain amount of nursing home receivables. I've worked with the nursing home billing team as well as the nursing home administrator. And we've determined that there is an amount of twenty-six thousand, eight hundred fifty-one dollars and fourteen cents that is uncollectible. All efforts have been exhausted, and they're not going to get those funds. There is detail attached as to what that amounts to. So I'm, I'm recommending that we write off that amount this year, it's twenty-six thousand, eight fifty-one and fourteen cents. We currently have forty-five thousand dollars in the allowance for doubtful account, so that write-off will come from that balance. And what that means is it's not going to affect the fund balance. In addition, it already has, because that's why that money was put in there initially. So I would be looking for your approval on the write-off. That concludes my requests and my reports.
Lori, the high number of uncollected bills for twenty-one and twenty-two, is that a COVID issue? In twenty-three was twenty-two hundred, in twenty-twenty was a thousand, in twenty-nine it was a hundred thousand. It spiked up to eleven and eleven. Is that, is that a COVID deal?
I, I don't actually think that it is. I'm just, I'm looking at the details, a kind of a mixture of people and charges from multiple payers. So it's a combination of Medicaid and Medicare, and it's people that have typically passed. When it's just amounts that in those years, I think those are higher because predominantly we're concentrating on probably those two years. Two thousand and twenty-three, we really won't look at a lot of that because they're still collecting on that. There was only a small amount there because they know of a few, very few, that will just not be collected. But I think it's, it's kind of typical. We've written off in the past years a little bit from two thousand nineteen and twenty already, and this is kind of like what's left there. But no, I really don't, I don't think it's COVID, it's just the circumstances and the nature of what happened here.
So that's, that's over a five-year period then. So, so do we have any reference, point of reference from fiscal years fourteen through eighteen, the previous five years, you know? Do we have any idea what that amount of uncollected revenue was?
You know what, I do, as a matter of fact, and I didn't forget this name.
You have it in your head by any chance?
I, I don't trust it in my head to remember that, but I could, wow, I could probably.
I mean, what if the numbers are consistent?
So they were much higher in prior years.
They were.
And, yes, and it's been going down consistently. What we're seeing now is more of a, what I'm calling a maintenance write-off. It's a write-off that should be done every year, looking at the accounts that just a one hundred percent not going to be collected for multiple. When we kind of first started, I know that we were in the hundred thousand dollar range of writing things off. So this has gone down considerably.
I mean, if the number were significantly lower the previous five years, it may merit more of a look, look see. But the fact that this is a better number for these previous five years than the ones we've seen in that five-year period, I think we're probably okay with this.
It is a much better number. Last year, we wrote off somewhere in the sixty or seventy thousand dollar range, I believe.
Yeah, that's a lot higher.
Yeah.
More than double.
Yeah.
And so Lori, this twenty-six thousand is going to be written off against that forty-five, but then what is the recommended reserve for two thousand and twenty-three that is going to be back in?
To leave it at the forty-five, so funding it back, so.
So that's my question, is, is the recommendation to fund it back to forty-five, or is the reserve going to be something less than that?
It's to fund it back to the forty-five.
So then the twenty-six thousand or twenty-seven thousand actually will affect the fund balance?
This is, yes, so we will have to replenish the allowance, which will affect the fund balance by twenty, another twenty-six.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Move on that, or?
Yeah, I think we should, yeah.
I'll, I'll move the write-off recommendation as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
On the cash flow statement, just going back to that for a second, I, we used to have a column with the, our funds. Is that all inclusive in the T L accounting balance now, or is there funds?
It's not inclusive in that.
What cash do we still have that's sitting in reserves or?
For our, but it was.
Have we taken that into account here, should we not, as we have in the past?
Well, we have in the past, and I did call it out because I know that these projects are dwindling that capital down very quickly. And so as to not use that for cash flow any longer is why I took it out of here. There is still a separate column where it is being tracked.
Well, my concern with that is we're, we're not showing an accurate cash position and cash flow, unless you're saying that by March thirty-first we're going to expend all of our art funds. Because as I look at this, I'd be very concerned that here we sit almost March first, and by March thirty-first, we're going to be in the red, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And we're hopeful that the delegation is going to approve the TAN, and we're hopeful we're going to be able to close by March fifteenth. Those two hopefuls make me very concerned that come the end of March, we're not going to have enough cash to operate county. So is that not in fact the case?
So there is other funds that aren't reflected in here. It's between two point five million and two point nine million roughly, I think is what we would.
Okay, so I, I really think that this cash flow statement needs to be accurate to show that the total cash on hand and then the projected cash expenditures of those art funds when we fully plan to spend those. Because this is, this isn't factual information that I'm looking at.
I, I deliberately pulled the ARPA out of this, and, but I, I see what you're saying, so we can add it back in and.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's on the side, but it's not showing here.
Okay. Because that might have, that's one that's certainly going to affect when we're going to borrow, especially if we're borrowing at four percent interest, I'm not going to borrow March thirty-first when we have two and a half million dollars sitting in the bank. And I'm not going to need any of that cash until maybe October. Right? I mean, that, that's creating an expense to the county that we don't need. So, so I think before we, we commit to borrowing money that we start paying interest on as of March thirty-first, we, we need to see an accurate cash flow projection and statement to know when we actually need to borrow the cash. It's my thoughts.
Are you thinking we may not need to borrow that money?
That's what I'm hearing, there's, there's two and a half million dollars that needs to be added to every one of these numbers on the right until we, until we're, we are expending the art projects.
That's what I was.
We know one of them's a million dollars that's set aside for the solar system, and we don't know when we're going to spend that, so.
But we don't need it now.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Right, so.
Seven hundred fifty thousand of solar. And then, and yes, we are, we know that we're ramping up the courthouse basement, these things will start. But that's what, I think if I can get a better, um, plan of how that ARPA money will be spent and when. Then Lori can add back the ARPA funds on here, and, and with the two combined, we'll give a better picture.
Right.
Um, when we need the money.
Well, I mean, all those projects are gonna require R F Ps and to be signed off on contracts, and so with that, I would think there'd be a. This base schedule of, of work that we would then know as those payments are gonna be required to be paid. And until we do that, we don't have any commitment yet. Spend the money on, on, am I wrong?
I mean, the basement project is underway, is it not? Yeah, it's underway, we've spent a few hundred thousand there, but we'll have a guaranteed maximum coming out pretty soon, in the next couple of weeks.
Right.
Um, and there are many other projects that are underway, so we just need to basically have a cash flow of all those projects.
Correct.
But that money is getting spent quicker this year than it was last year.
Correct.
But when it gets added on here and we show the two together, then I think you will have the, you know, accurate picture that you're looking.
Thank you.
So when can we have the revised cash flow total before the fifteenth?
Yeah. That's a meeting before, they're meeting next week.
Yeah, the meeting is Monday.
Next Monday, March fifth already?
Yes.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I believe you. Uh, okay, um. Anything else? For your interest, okay, all right, Lori, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
Sheriff's there. Sheriff's here, and he has.
Before, before you say other, the sheriff.
Yeah, really.
Not even other.
I think he's just coming to say hello.
Really, did you forget the donuts?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so I come before you, uh, to request permission, um, under the contract authorization. To renew the contract with Central Square, which is our records management dispatch system. Um, to be able to pay an outstanding bill for twenty-four thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars and ninety cents. Now, um, this is a yearly annual subscription fee and, and, uh, maintenance fee that we normally pay. Um, I know that, uh, in my requested budget, I put forty-five thousand dollars and some change. Because that's what it's gonna cost once we get switched to the live, uh, situation. Uh, but I was hopeful that we were gonna have everything going by this time, uh, but we are not. So the I M C live is still an ongoing project, um, and I M C is asking for payment, uh, for, for the services that they're rendering. And because we just did a, uh, a server, uh, migration project, so, uh, we've been using I M C a lot, uh, for some of their, uh, services. So I don't wanna compromise that, so I'm asking authorization to actually pay this bill, uh, to get this moving forward.
Bill, have services been fully rendered on this invoice?
Uh, so this invoice here is a, uh, it's actually an ongoing thing, so it's server access. Like we have, the program is in there, so all these licensing fees and all that, it's an ongoing thing throughout the course of the year. So we normally pay at the beginning of the year, and then it goes for the remainder of the year.
So we pay in advance?
Yes. Yep, and, and again, I'll end up having to come back before you, um, once we go live, and then they'll give me a prorated amount for what the remainder is. Which again, if we had done it for the entire year, it would have been over forty-five thousand. But because, um, this, this twenty-four thousand is what we normally pay, uh, every year. So because we're not hooked into live yet, uh, they're saying, hey, it's time to pay this, and, you know, we're getting into the, uh, you know, almost a quarter of the year, so, um, they're looking for their money, so.
There's forty-five thousand outline items to pay this?
Yes, so I've asked, uh, in the budget for forty-five thousand, uh, to cover the I M C, uh, subscription and maintenance fees, uh, for the year for that. So there could potentially be a little bit of savings.
This will leave out the surplus.
So this is a budget that I have in this year's budget, Lori?
Yes. Yep, and, and the goal is for next year, um, if we have enough money left in a grant, we can cover the entire licensing fee for next year. Um, through the grant process, if there's enough money left in the grant, um, at the end of the project. So that.
Would that be something definitely that we're not paid till the budget passed, which is great.
This, this is an ongoing annual expense, so I don't see any problem paying this, it's overdue already, and.
Okay.
We're going to use at least their twenty-four thousand dollars with the service.
So Lori, regardless of anything, we're using twenty-four thousand dollars worth of services as it sits right now anyways, just keeping the system running.
Okay, thanks.
So you need a mo, we need a motion. To approve, the payment, otherwise payment and invoice?
Yes.
Uh, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye, the motion carries.
Thank you. And there was one other thing that was kind of a surprise today was, um, I know that there's a delegation meeting coming up. And, uh, and because legislation has changed, uh, RSA one oh four thirty-one, which, uh, talks about fees for sheriffs. And deputies, um, and it has to do with service of writs. This year, um, we have the opportunity to have a three point five percent increase on the base of, uh, writs. That we get for the service fees for that, and, uh, has to be presented to the delegation in order for that to, to be approved. And that's, that's per, uh, this RSA. So I don't know, last year, um, I actually presented it to the delegation. But I wanted to find out if the board wants to present it at the meeting, or do you want me to do it? But it's supposed to be done at the beginning of the year, uh, as they're doing their budget preparations, so.
You wanna present before then Monday?
That's, that's the question that I have for the board, is whether you want me to do it, or you want me to give you the letter, however you'd like me to do it.
I, my opinion is you'd be appropriate to have the sheriff make the presentation.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. All right, that's all I have, unless you have anything for me. You know me, I can keep talking.
Oh, I know, it's okay.
Our deputies are out hammering this weekend, out on the interstates, uh, helping out the state police, we're staff and control, I don't know if you saw that on channel nine, but it was, uh, it's pretty decent. So they're doing a stroke of business.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill, good seeing you. Deborah, other business?
Well, that was the other, we don't have any others?
That was the other.
I would, actually, can I mention, I think I, I don't know if I just put one of these in your folders or not, but an invitation, I know it was emailed you to attend this, um. We want to open up model mapping workshop for Villap County, which is going to be presented here, it's a two-day workshop, there's no charge.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it will involve the, um, justice system, store of justice, the corrections, county attorney, will all be here. People will come, uh, I just, I just, this is going to be presented by the state in every county. So I am just encouraging you to attend, I'll be there, we have several employees who will all be there. And you are certainly, uh, welcome and encouraged to attend. It goes seventeenth and eighteenth.
You're tra, you're traveling the week before, aren't you?
I am.
Yeah, but you'll be back for this.
All those according to plan, I will be here.
Okay, all right. Very good, thank for letting us know. And public comments, seeing no members of the public here. Uh, next on the agenda? Permission, where is anything?
What, adjournment? Is that next? You're, you're the keeper of the agenda.
So, uh, we have a semi-annual tour of the Department of Corrections. And Superintendent Wetherby is here to escort us to the facility.
Yes, sir.
Okay, then I guess we'll take the tour before we adjourn.
And it will be fast, it was record time last time.
Will orders be served this night?
I can reassure you.
I love the lobster burger.
I can't, you have a handful of mince, though.
All right, Michelle, you're at your service.